Okay, I will make your motion to follow the meeting to order. Second, how do you vote? Oh, you gotta call roll call.
Yes, please. Member Rota?
Aye.
Uh, member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wokes?
Aye.
Chair Rees-Jeff?
Aye.
Motion to taxes.
Okay. Um, so we have one item on the agenda for tonight, which was 21 East Jefferson Street. There's an area variance for constructing a pool patio and, um, I guess a pool house is the other.
I'm sure.
Yes. Um, anyway, uh, first thing is conflict of interest disclosure. Does anyone have any conflict of interest to disclose?
I do not.
I do not. Okay. Um, okay, so here is what I would like to do for this. So we have the applicant here and, um, is that your architect as well?
This is our neighbor Jim.
That's your neighbor Jim?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so it's just you, you're presenting, you don't have your architect here. Okay, just want to understand that. So, um, what I'd like to do tonight is have you by all means introduce your project a little bit, explain what you're doing, and, um, I'd like to hear what you have to say, and we will open the public hearing and, um, accept input from neighbors and other people who have comments they want to submit. Um, and, um, then board may have some questions for you, and, um, I don't know how much of the variance process has been explained to you. Um, have, have you gotten a good explanation of what our review criteria is or anything like that?
I mean, I've been talking with Steve a little bit, obviously, but, um, I don't know, we just kinda come in and one foot in front of the other.
Yeah, well, that's fine. Um, we have, I have an example one of someone else who applied for a pool and patio that was approved for lot coverage. Is there another one?
Was not.
Was.
Was.
Okay, so, well, you can actually read this, and you can see what we found in the past and what we looked at in the past. We're gonna look at the same criteria. Um, and in general, what we are here for is aspects of your design have been found to not comply with the code. We are authorized to provide some relief to that where it makes sense, and there are specific criteria we have to consider. And in particular, we're looking at is the benefits to you and considering potential impacts on neighboring properties in the neighborhood and stuff like that. So those are, we want to understand the impacts of this. Um, we can talk some more about this, um, in a little while. Now, the one other thing is, my understanding is your plans are somewhat preliminary and they're a little bit in flux. Is that, is that, is that how you would state it? I know you want to put a pool in.
Do you have a copy of this? Okay, so this is basically what we're working on right here.
Well, here, you know what? Just wanna just come out and go ahead and present us what you're thinking of doing.
So, um, so like, looking from, you know, the road or whatever, or you've got kinda this.
This is the drawing we have with some red lines on it.
Yes.
It looks like here, it's, we just haven't had the red lines on it.
Yeah, I just printed it out, yeah.
Is it this one, right here?
Yes, yep, yep. So, I don't know, let's see, should I point and just show you guys? So, um, let me just get my bearings here. So this is kind of the way I look at it, like I'm looking at it from my house, kind of when I'm inside. So here's the road. Uh, this is East Jefferson, you know, um, Jefferson Road. This is the lot next to us. This is Michael Newcombe's property here, and...
Oh, but it's a vacant lot.
It's a vacant lot.
It's owned by...
Yep.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't sure if it was actually owned by anybody, or if it was part of the road.
Behind us is the power lines, which is the, I presume is state property, and then we have a neighbor on this side. Um, there's a fence in between the properties. Um, here's our garage, here's, you know, the bulk of our house. Um, this is an existing patio here, um, here, okay, just so you can follow along. Um, so we've got an 18 by 36 floor, which is pretty much right in the middle of our backyard.
That's your proposed.
Yes.
So everything, well, you're modifying this, and, and...
No, this is the same.
So this area here in your plan is the same as it is now?
Yeah, we're not, there won't be, this is existing, there won't be any, well, I shouldn't say that. There will be some, like, maybe some blue stone here, there's gonna be drainage that comes through here. Um, I don't know how, what types of information you need, but this was just our preliminary map.
Okay.
Um, yes, and then, so, I'm not sure what this is. We only have one shed on the property currently. It's 10 by 12, and I'm not sure if this is, like, from the previous owners, or it's propos, I, I don't know, but there's only one.
Are you talking about the dotted?
Yeah, so, and I'm not exactly sure which one is, where it's actually is. It's closer to the back of our property.
Yeah, anyway, it's on here, and those are both being removed.
Yeah, there's only one shed. Um, it's, you know, kind of old, um, you know, it's kinda rotting from the, the sides a little bit, we've painted it and stuff, but it's kind of yucky. We'd like to update it. So for our purposes, we'd like to propose to have a shed. Um, it'll be like, kind of like what we have now, only like an A-frame, it won't be like, we're not gonna have, it's just gonna be like a prefabricated, um, shed.
Okay.
You know?
And the dimensions of that are...
The dimensions that we'd like are 12 by 24. Um, part of that we would like to have as, you know, our storage, 'cause we use it for, you know, lawn tools, you know, stuff like that, porch furniture during the winter, blah, blah, blah. So we'd like part of that to be, you know, used for that, and part of this to be kind of like a usable little, like, hangout area. Um, we've got two boys, eight and 10, so we'd like to have, like, maybe, we're thinking about having some water out there, a sink, um, a possible toilet, these are things we're looking into, we haven't gotten pricing yet, maybe some sort of like a, we don't know, you know, depending on cost, maybe like some sort of like a pump-style toilet or something. Um, electricity, um, but it wouldn't be like a dwelling or anything like, you know, anything like that, just be for summer use. Um, what else would you like me to chat about? This is our bedroom here, so, um, right here.
Okay.
So we're proposing, um, some French doors to come off onto a deck here, hot tub space here.
Cool. Oh, I see. So right here, where you...
Yeah, exactly, the French door, uh, deck, hot tub.
Got it.
Okay. Mike, anything?
No, I think that'll be pretty good.
All right.
So, we just wanna, you know, beautify it, and we love our house, we've done some, you know?
Yeah, we've done here 13 years, I love, we both grew up here, that's nice, so, we don't wanna go anywhere, we just wanna have a place where our kids can, you know, enjoy themselves for the next 10 years, and then we can enjoy it for the next 20, 30.
And we kinda wanna, you know, the house isn't huge, so we like the space, you know, out there, that they can kind of be out there.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Have fun, be out there. Oh, also, um, there'd be a, um, a gas, um, fire, where are we here? Probably in this area here, right off of the, off of the shed here.
Okay.
Okay.
Little fire pit, okay.
And then, you know, as we go through this process, we'll, you know, I know, I think we might have to show you like actual plans of the shed and whatnot.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, we're gonna wanna see some more detailed plans, um, for the shed.
Steve thought for today's purposes, we were...
We need our, like, standup and everything like that.
Yeah, so in particular, um, the height of the shed is something we're gonna want, we're gonna want the dimensions of the shed. If you have an approximate interior layout of how you think it's to be divided, we might consider that, I'm not sure. Um, really, we don't really care what goes on inside the building, but you say it's gonna be a storage shed and a little bit of a bathroom. One of the things I have a bigger concern about is running utilities there.
Yep.
Um, so you said you want to run electric, you want to run a drain pipe, and, um, you want to run a water supply.
Yeah, electric will be run out probably, 'cause the pup house would be behind the shed anyways.
We're gonna have a...
So I think electric is pretty straightforward, you can go overhead lines, or you can go underground.
Yeah.
But you have a pool between the house and there. So figuring, and I believe, uh, Steve said it was also, I believe, lower, um, so if you're gonna have a drain there...
Probably a little bit, yeah.
You're gonna need to figure out how it's gonna go downhill to the house.
Right.
And you're also gonna need to figure out how to get water lines there, going underneath the pool or something like that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna encourage you to give some hard talks to both the building inspector and your architect about how that can physically work.
Okay.
Um, so, um, so yeah, I would like to see some better drawings of that.
Okay.
Um, I've had a number of discussions with the building inspector about code-related issues, and, um, sheds are permitted, the so-called pool house as it's labeled. Um, the way the village code has been for ages is you're allowed to have an exterior garage and one other kind of accessory building. Um, so it's not a, this isn't a detached garage, there's no car storage going on here. Um, and there's size limitations on that, and, um, so I think when you get a little better detailed drawings of this, I think it's wanna be clear exactly where it's located. I think it's pretty close here.
Yeah, pretty here.
We're gonna wanna know the distance to on the property lines, um, distance from the house, distance from the pool. Um, I don't know if you have a newer, um, this looked like it was like a 30 or 40-year-old survey, is that right?
Yeah.
I don't know if you have anything newer.
Well, I mean, 'cause when we called the town about, you know, a survey map, this is all they had.
That's what they had, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so you didn't get one when you purchased the house, you didn't, that wasn't, the previous owner didn't give you one?
I don't think so. I mean, we can look, we have some stuff, right?
I don't think I have anything different than this, do we?
I don't know. I don't think so either, but we'll take a look.
What year, does it say what year it is?
Because the final cat that we have is...
No, I pulled it out. I pulled out our closing documents, and it seemed like it was the same as...
Yeah. Well, maybe we could get a new survey of it, I guess.
Okay. Um, okay, um, so, I'll, I'll just hand this to you, this is a prior decision we made. So there's a couple issues that I'm aware of that might be going on here. One is the size of your shed, because, uh, I've talked to the building inspector about this, um, a shed size is a maximum of 120 square feet.
Which is what we have now.
Which is what you have now, and you wanna build something larger, and, um, so the building inspector thought, um, if it was gonna be larger than that, you would have to apply for an area variance for that as well.
Right.
Again, we can grant relief for code, from code, I'll get into some of the, what we have to look at when we do that, just so you're aware of it.
Okay.
Um, so we can do that. Um, that said, we, I don't think we have ever seen an area variance for a shed or a building, uh, larger than needed, so we're gonna have to think about what we're gonna do about that.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So there isn't any precedent I can pull up that I'm aware of that I can give you.
Okay.
With lot coverage, there's lots of precedent on that, we've done lots of those. We know the code says you could have up to 25% impervious surface, and half the village exceeds that.
Okay.
Or something like that.
Yeah, 'cause I think we're at that now.
And lot, so they, when they adopted code, they set a number, I don't think any, I don't know where the number came from, and, but why they adopted a code that half the village doesn't comply with, I, you know, that's not for me to figure out. But we know that it's a widespread issue that that succeeded, and so when requests like this come up, we wanna understand how it impacts the neighbors and so on.
Right.
And in particular, if you want to do more impervious surface, you know, how is drainage gonna work? Are you making sure that your water is draining, not going on your neighbor's property? If you're doing other things, um, you know, putting up lighting, for example, you wanna make sure you're not getting glare on your neighbor's property.
Right, okay.
And...
I don't think we'll be doing any sort of lighting like that, do you?
No, probably not.
No, I just, it'd be like path lights or something, you know what I mean?
Yeah, okay, so you're not...
We don't have any neighbors behind us, 'cause we have the power lines.
You have power lines behind you.
We have no neighbors too.
We really don't have any neighbors in that regard, because the people too are right, we're right on Jefferson Road, and the only neighbor we have on the right, their garage is next to us, you know what I mean, and there's a good...
Would you, would you have any lights from the actual shed, or the pool house going back towards the house? I think you might need a little light next to the door.
Yeah, we played out something like, yeah, I don't need, you know, a little light.
But I wouldn't have it, I don't think so either, anybody.
So I'm gonna ask you to think about that.
Yeah.
If you're gonna give us some more detailed plans on the shed...
Yep.
Um, think about at least where you're gonna have lights, where you'd like to have them, and give us a little description of them. I know people, it's a pain in the butt to pick them out, but in general, if you're having, the general rule is if you have a single bulb and it's 75 watts or less equivalent, it's really not a big deal, it's allowed.
Okay. 75 watt?
We can grant more than that.
Okay.
So if you wanna have an area light for some reason or another, I mean, there are people that have, um, you know, freestanding light posts in their front yard or other yard, so...
Okay.
I mean, there are various options, but what we like to see is it's not adding a lot to glare. You like the ground?
Yeah.
You don't like the neighbors?
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, if you have like some kind of shield around the bulb, so a lot of them have like, you know, a little cone-shaped metal piece, and then the bulb is inside there, so the light goes down.
Oh, I see.
You know, that's, that's a nice courtesy for the neighbors, because it lets you, um, get light on the ground, but the neighbors don't see that.
Right, yeah.
You know, I have some, um, people, uh, there's some garages that just have floodlights, you know, mounted directly on them, and...
Too much.
Yeah, it's just, it just adds a little glare, that your neighbors can see, so...
Well, the, the neighbors on that side, there's thick brush, like a big brush line in between our houses, and it, I don't...
We don't really...
It's not, I don't think, it won't be an issue, really.
We're not gonna use it, well, obviously, so there won't be any brush, but in the summer it's pretty thick.
It's thick, I mean, even if it was, and plus, we've got little kids, we probably want to...
So yeah, I mean, in general, you wanna be good neighbors.
Yeah.
So we don't want, we don't wanna see significant adverse impacts on the neighbors. So, um, so those are things that we've looked at in the past for lot coverage, and you know, and if you're building something, it's nice if, if you're doing, I don't know what you're doing with landscaping, we don't normally ask state landscaping is required, but, I mean, if you're putting in a pool area, I think you might want a little shielding even from the, the power lines and stuff like that, so if you wanna put some brush or trees in there...
Right.
Um, does it look like you didn't have it too much in the back?
I don't, yeah, I mean, it's wide, our backyard's wide open, and that's, I guess, part, and, you know, it hasn't bothered us all these years, we're, you know, we mow the lot, we mow the yard behind us.
The power lines, we had a lot of dead trees, because it used to be, it was a rental for six years when we bought it. So when we took over, we got cleared out, we dropped the dead trees, and the only nice tree we had, our genie kept by and then whacked it in half every year.
It was like, it was like a big trunk with like...
Our only tree we have, it's alive, and so I just, I just actually, I cut it down, we cleared everything out, and we're totally, which we don't like, there's not too many people, you know, we have walkers with dogs, just kinda walk by.
But not heavy.
I mean, you have the people on Ridge Parkway, but they're a good ways away, they all have fences, so we felt like, there's nobody that's actually looking in our yard, so we're like, we left it wide open.
Yeah.
We kinda like, cut the grass, you know, behind it and stuff like that.
We've enjoyed the space, to be honest.
Okay.
Yeah, um, but...
Yeah, I mean, with the pool, I mean, we sit out there sometimes, there might be 10 people walk by, you know what I mean? So it's not really like there's a lot of usage.
You mean, walked up, walked down the power lines?
The power lines, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't know that people walked down the...
A lot of dog walkers, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 'cause everybody pretty much, there's a path.
It's a good hillbank there, it's a good workout.
You go all the way from Main Street, all the way down to Jefferson Road, there's a path, you'll mow it, and then, you know, there's a stop, it's pretty wild, if there's still a path, then you get down towards the end, it's all mowed, so we have a neighbor on Ridge, that mows most of it, then we mow a lot of it.
I'll usually take a stroll by there sometimes.
Yeah, come up, so you can see...
I only live about two blocks from you, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Where do you live?
I, I live on Fountain Avenue, which is...
Oh, yeah.
Which is not too far.
I grew up on Washington Ave, I, I...
Um, you live close, close to there.
We're, we're over on Rand Place, on the other end of the power lines.
Oh, nice, yeah, we're all close, yeah.
We're actually neighbors, on the corner of Rand and Jefferson.
Okay.
A good blue house.
Okay.
It used to be yellow, the one I have in the corner.
It has like a screened-in porch?
Yeah.
In the back?
Oh, yeah, so you're kinda new too, right? Yeah, cool.
One year.
Yeah, nice.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so, so those are some of the things we look at for lot coverage. Um, I don't wanna get a lot, I mentioned landscaping, you consider what you wanna do, we normally respect that, uh, for residential projects, people wanna do what they wanna do with their yard, so we don't normally ask for a lot, but if there's anything unsightly that people have concerns about, whether it's air conditioners, or, or, you know, maybe even, I don't know if people have thoughts about pot tubs or what, but it's often nice to just plant some shrubs around it.
Yes, there will be some shrubs around the hot tub. Um, but other than that, we didn't have a ton, I mean, you know, the project's enough right now, so maybe not like heavy plantings this year, hopefully, but maybe down the road, you know, kinda one step at a time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, anything else anyone wants to talk about, or thoughts about what lot coverage does?
So drainage, I know he does have, um, and I, you know what, it's not on here, it's not on this copy, but...
So...
We don't want anything going in the neighbor's yard at all.
You don't want anything going in the neighbor's yard? I, I think everything you're doing is at least 15 feet from the property, I believe, is that about right? Your house is 15 feet, I don't know how far this is.
Not from the back.
The pool, yeah, this, this might be a little...
I wanna say that, is that, does that have a four next to it there? Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that's what it was like.
We talked, I talked to Steve a little bit, and he thought it was four feet from the back.
He said three, so I think he'd make...
So, I don't know, I mean, so we went off that, what he had said.
So, something I wouldn't mind seeing is if you could, if, if you're just doing downspouts with water just going on the ground, if you could just mark where they are.
Downspouts on the...
They're just going on the ground?
Okay.
Is that how you're, or do you have them going underground right now?
On our existing house?
Yes.
Um, they are, you know what, they are going to be, uh, let me show you, let's see. Okay, so this is, um, this goes underground, these two are underground here, our downspouts, and it, it deposits into the front yard, we had that installed.
Okay, that's a drywall.
The back here, we're proposing these the same, these will go in the ground and come out this way, I'm sure.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that sounds reasonable, and then the pool is, I understand it's pitched towards the back?
Yes, yep, and there'll be some, there'll be some sort of drainage in here, in this space.
Okay, so you're gonna have some, okay, so like a French drain underground or something like that?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Okay, and then, um, how about the shed and the rear area?
Did I, I brought other stuff, do you, should we go get it? The, the big plan?
Okay. You have a bigger plan?
Yeah, I do, we just figured that this is what, um, um, that our landscaper, Bruce, sent to Steve, so, so I figured this is what you guys wanted to see.
Well, yeah, we, we need, we need to set a plan to show us what you're doing, so, uh, variety of stuff comes in, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Well, yeah, we got the big, you know, um, so yeah, and it shows different, that one shows like different elevations and stuff, like minus one, minus four, my, whatever, it's kinda over my head, but...
So...
You wanna see that kinda stuff?
Um, I'm kind of curious, but the main thing, what I normally do is I will ask the building inspector Steve to, well, what he thinks of the drainage situation.
Okay.
And normally, what we ask for is keep, keep the water in your property, you don't wanna create ponds.
Yeah, no.
And, but, I mean, with the power lines behind you there, I don't see how that's likely to bother anything.
Okay, and the lot next to us, like I said, Michael, Michael Newcombe's property is lower too.
So this one, this is lower, and this is lower than your house back here, okay?
Yeah.
And over here, I know it's a long way to many buildings.
And this, this is, um, I would say higher, their property's higher.
Oh, this is, oh, this is great, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, this is...
I'm gonna move your finger.
So it had the two sheds originally, I don't know why he had that, so that one, that's the original shed where it is. That's what we have right now, which we would take out.
Okay, so my, so just saying, my understanding is having two shed-like buildings, which is not...
No, I don't want to.
Okay, that's why I said, you want to take that one out.
He kept it, and we were like, well, why is that there? We were like, we don't want two sheds.
And this is, um, a little smaller, he had a 10 by 17, it's a little smaller than what we wanted, so it would fill, the extra would fill up this space, and we would hopefully be able to kinda keep that, our storage, you know what I mean? Like, this would kinda, you know, the larger bit could hold the storage, and that could be like our, our pool, like our hangout kind of.
Okay. And so this would be the only exterior additional building?
Only, only, yes, only, please, I only want one.
Okay, well, this, this drawing is much easier to see what's going on.
Yeah, okay.
So thank you for showing that.
So, you know, here's, see this right here, what does he have here? So this dotted line here is drainage, right here, and then you see he's got like minus four, minus one and a half, like minus three, you know, that's, that's all the elevations and stuff.
Okay.
That's a per, a little bit, we don't want that, that was just the original design. There's things that, you know, he, he implemented, this is what he brought to us, so we're still work, it's still work in progress, like, yeah, things that we don't want.
But this is a very good idea.
Yeah, I mean, the big stuff, I mean, we'll...
Cool.
So this is, you know, the spaces are existing already.
Yeah.
We've got some plantings here that we'll take out, and then kind of to ease it into the, you know, the space here, yeah, so we'll take that out.
Oh, that's the fire pit right there.
Fire pit, yeah, and another Japanese maple over here.
So you're planting a couple trees, you're planting that maple?
This one's here already, we did that years ago, this one will be new. This one's here already, we did that years ago, this one will be new. Um, you know, like, we haven't, like we said, we haven't gotten really in depth with the plantings yet, but here's the hot tub, and that, this is a whole space of, you know, to kind of, like you were saying, kind of.
Is the fire pit going to be, um, natural gas or propane? We have a tank?
I like natural gas, but like, we're, we're in the midst of getting some, somebody to come over and talk to us about.
plumbers, I mean, a plumber that would use it, because we own the base and pub, so we have a plumber for the business, and he's like, yeah, I'll go over there a couple of weeks, it's not, you know. This guy's plumber that did the art and the design, and they said, yeah, I'll be over in a couple of days.
Okay.
Nobody's come over.
Question that you're, you're figuring out.
So we're working on it, somebody called me, what, Monday, and said sometime this week, so.
So once you give that information, then you're making a decision, whether to be running gas lines out or.
Yeah.
We, we need to kind of get an idea of cost, these are.
The gas line, an electrician, they have people in place to put all that stuff in.
Gotcha.
When they do the pool, which, I know, who's the guy that's?
John Nesbit, from Northeastern.
He would probably come to you guys for everything anyways, right?
He's gonna do all the permit and stuff like that.
And permits and stuff like that.
Okay, so, um, all right, this, this looks like, uh, I'm really glad you brought this drawing up to show us, give you a better idea of what's going on. So this, this is, I mean, you have a lot of the key information on here, it's just hard to visualize.
I thought that's what you wanted.
And I also did, anything that helps us visualize what's going on is helpful. So, and, you know, and this is great, because this shows us that.
So, yeah, this is something, um, so, um, so like on this side here of the shed, we'd like to have the, um, we kind of talked with some shed people last week, and we could have like a little cutout here, where we could have like some bar stools and like a little counter there in between this space. So, this is, we're not doing, I don't know what all this is, but this won't, this is no longer a thing, because he, he, we just didn't want what he proposed inside, basically.
Okay, so this is.
This is nothing, yeah, ignore, but this, it'll be, you know, like, we know we've got to try to keep it in line with the shape of the house to a point, and like the color and all that, so like.
So, yeah, the general requirement for, is try to follow the style of your house.
Right.
Okay, so if you have, you know, similar types of siding, I don't think you have to match the colors, people don't regulate colors around here, but you want to have window styles and door styles.
Yeah, I mean, we went like to the sheds, and it would be the exact same, like trim.
Oh, here it is.
With the shutters being black to.
I'll show mom's neighbors. So, just an example, this is my mom's neighbor's shed, and almost probably very similar to that.
Okay.
That actual look, and if you look at my house, it's going to, you know, it'll kind of tie in, right?
Okay, um, another issue in code that we run into is there is a maximum height for, for buildings of twelve feet.
Twelve feet, okay.
And, um, it's been pointed out to us, you could not, cannot physically construct a garage that's twelve feet tall and actually have it like sit too far. So, this has been on the list of updates to, you know, things to address in code, it'd be nice to modify that.
Well, this one, that shed's in the village, this one I just showed you.
But I'm, I'm, I'm just saying is that, that's another issue you can think about, and that might be something else that you might have to apply for a variance for.
I don't know how tall these are, I haven't, I don't know how tall it is.
That's all right, we have to apply for a variance, but we're going to get them.
Okay.
So that gives you a little idea of just what it would look like, kind of.
Yeah, so my, my understanding is that, that's really hopeful to have this, um, but basically the next steps are, I think, if you get a little more detailed drawings.
Yeah.
Um, then the building inspector will make some determinations, if you need extra variances for, if you're going to keep this over a hundred and twenty square feet, that sounds definitely like one you're going to need.
Yeah.
Um, and then whether height or some, or setbacks are an issue.
Yeah, we need to see.
Yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna take a look at all of that, and he'll work with you on that. Um, speaking for, for me personally, I don't really want to grant things for anything that won't be built. So, I'm gonna, so if, my concern is getting utilities and stuff out there, if there's issues with utilities that might completely change this plan, I would really like you to figure that out, so that what's before us is what you actually plan to build, and, you know, get some idea of what this is going to cost, but everyone has budgets.
Well, that's, I told her, I said, I'm not going to spend all this money on plumbing out there, it's going to be so much money, we'll just stop that plumbing.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Electrical, I think, would be okay, but, because our line runs right on the right side of the house, so the pole's right there at the end of our property, so we probably just tie in right there.
Oh, okay. Or, yeah, however that works, coming from your, coming from your house.
Runs, yeah, to the right, in between the two houses.
Okay.
Then it comes out the house, so, but yeah, I mean, but they know they have a pump outlet out that you can run, that you can run right into your water line or something like that.
Your sewer, your sewer pipe.
Well, I mean, when we get more architectural.
Jim, what was it called, the, what was the pump outlet, Liberty Palm, Liberty Palm?
Ejection.
Ejection?
Yeah. So.
Jim, do you want?
All that in.
Okay.
We'll put all that, you know, the architectural design, whatever, and see, obviously, if that's even feasible, it's horrible for us to do that.
Okay, um, you know, we've asked for a bunch, how about we open up the public hearing and hear if anyone has any comments, sounds good to me.
Should we step back, or?
You can do it every, you can stay there, or you can step back, it doesn't matter to me.
Wherever you're comfortable.
Whatever.
Just hang out right there.
Okay, um, so I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to open the public hearing, and just to present, um, a couple rules with this, um, anyone in the audience can raise their hand, and, um, after the motion's successful, that is, um, we can make, um, reasonably appropriate comments, what your thoughts are on the project, um, if there are people online, um, is there anyone online?
We have one person, but it's Katie, so I don't know if she is a neighbor or want to say something, or she's just listening.
Okay, so if people are listening online, you can click the retain button, and, um, you can type comments, or we could give you a chance to speak. Um, so with that said, there's a motion on the floor to open the public hearing.
Second.
Want to call a roll vote?
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wokes?
Aye.
Member Roba?
Aye.
Terri Strath?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, um, first of all, let's start with people in the room, is there anyone in the room that would like to speak? Okay, go ahead and just state.
No matter, Jim.
Yep, state your name and address, and, um, and, uh, with, and whatever you have to say.
Yeah, I'm just, uh, Jim Wick. From U P I C K, I live on eleven, or at eleven East Jefferson Circle, right, about that center to the circle up in there. Born and raised, by the way, in the village of Pittsburgh, and, uh, what, what I wanted to just kind of address here real quickly, or make a statement on, is the, the item that we of course got the public hearing notice on was in terms of the surface area for the drainage. Um, we've lived there for twelve years, it's absolutely, never had any problem, my biggest concern, because I had basements that I had a continuous flow, you would not even want to put a pump into, because if the pump went, you wouldn't know until you were up to your knee. And all the hillside comes down from Eastview Terrace, and I was shocked the way it someday when it just rains like the dick, it was that fifteen minute period that you pull over the side of the road, and we've never had any problem on the street. Um, I have a cell pump, I tested it once, I had, you know, pour a bucket of water and just make sure it works, I hope it's the same. Um, so we really don't have any kind of existing problem, and historically, and Justin, I can confirm your situation here in the village, where they're saying that the percentages in half the buildings, you know, don't comply. I was basically the pseudo project or building manager for the Masonic Temple for a quarter century or so, and we had water problems there. And yet, we're the only ones that had a grass lawn coming down Church Street from Main Street, so what was going on? Well, I go out to take a look, all the properties on Main Street, their roofs, all had an open gutter that dumped onto our lawn. The parking lots were all pitched towards our lawn.
There you go.
So.
That's what you don't want to see.
Always had water in there, so I, I know exactly where that kind of goes. But I would also point out a, a few things that would actually probably improve our immediate area. One was that recent renovation, um, where they rebuilt at Justin Road. You might recall that from Eastview Terrace on down to the opposite end of, um, our street, before their house, was paved between the sidewalk and the road, and when they narrowed the road, they put a four-foot strip of grass. So there's now all the rest of the run of East Justin Circle, you know, a grass area. Obviously, can't forget, and it's already been mentioned, we've got the high tension wires out in the backyard, so there is a hundred miles worth of open space to take on some of the rainwater as, you know, passes through. So that's, that's a nice benefit, and, and they're doing a good job, and throwing their good pitch out to the back. Again, a real quick question for you guys, your circular patio out in the back?
Yeah.
That's pavers, right?
That is pavers, yes.
So I don't know where that goes into the equation, but that shouldn't be considered as hard surface, those.
That, that's considered impervious surface per our code.
Okay, all right.
But if water actually does, I mean, that's part of you, if, um, no, go ahead, I don't want to interrupt the comment.
And, and that just, you know, I, I always kind of wonder, I was holding a pool that's twelve by twenty, the pool itself can take on that onslaught of water during that, you know, fifteen minute rain thing, so, is that, you know, where does that show in the square footage? Um, and let's see, anything else? Uh, well, and, and obviously, we have the front circle, that nobody can build on, now, out in front, that's, everybody on the street owns a little piece of the, the grass pile out there, we all, you know, mow it stuff. So we're really in pretty good shape all the way around, and, and would say that, you know, I can't see them having a problem, especially having looked at their plans and know what they're dealing with the rest of it, they're very conscious of it. Yes.
Okay.
And, yeah, we've never had an issue in our basement, if that's, like, ever.
Okay, well, yeah, well, I'm hearing.
We know, we went to school with the boy that used to.
I've been going to that house since I was twelve years old, my buddy lived.
He's talked us through a lot of stuff, so we've, like, has, have you ever had?
Yeah, we used to hang out in the basement, I've never seen a water problem.
Okay, well, that's good.
And we're the lowest on the street, so I don't know how that can be, but.
Well, um, drainage is complicated, you can't figure it out by what's going on in your property, something you should think about, that's usually a complete afterthought when people are working on their plans, but you said you wanted to put in a French drain, and, um, you also wanted to put in a, um, um, it sounded like you wanted, you had another one for these.
The downspouts, yes.
Yeah, you wanted to put that out, to another pit out there, that's good that you're thinking about that, and it sounds like you're keeping it away from your house.
Oh, yeah.
The main thing we want to know is how is that impacting the neighbors?
Okay.
So technically, if you flood your basement, I mean, it's not a good design, but it's not bothering the neighbors, we might not say a whole lot about that.
Right.
Well, encourage you not to do that.
Right.
I don't know, but that's Steve's problem, so.
Yeah, this lot is empty, right, so it's not a problem, let's just say he goes to, um, you know, build a house on it someday, will that cause a problem for him?
Well, he's had it for fifteen years, I don't think.
Well, we want you, yeah, we want you to keep, in general, what he said is exactly what you don't want, you don't want a parking lot dumping water into someone else's yard. You don't want your gutters dumping water into someone else's yard for, when someone else wants to use their property and it turns into a pond, you know, that's not good. So if you're keeping it on your property and it goes down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
It's okay, okay.
That's a good design.
Okay.
Justin, I think you're familiar with our backyard, we've got a very large patio, we have four downs in our back, and again, we have that, you know, picture way which goes into the hillside coming down from, from Eastview, but I also put some large drainage areas that are kind of hidden under my gas grill and our little fireplace that is just filled with stone and, you know, stuff or whatever, I've never done anything, but.
Okay. Anyway, so you've been thinking about it, it sounds like your basement's dry, it sounds like you're coming up with a plan, so when you get your final plans, and, you know, the building inspector's done some walkthroughs presumably with you, we're going to ask his opinion on what he thinks of the drainage situation, and if he thinks it's fine, we usually accept that.
Okay.
So that's, that's what we're going to do, so it sounds like you're on the ball with all of that, and then, uh, lighting was another matter, or that we mentioned, yeah, you can think about. Um, there's a person online, is that right?
There's no questions, no.
No questions, okay. Um, all right, well, um, does anyone else have any questions?
I think we covered it.
We covered a bunch of things, Jim. All right, um, I will hand this to you, and we can explain the variance process a little bit, this is a prior decision, and, um, if you look at it, the first page is just about is a, a bunch of leg leaves, but the second page, there's a bunch of underlying, um, um, things in there, so. Now, we're just going to keep it open, since they're going to, uh, at least I'll, I plan to keep it open, and, uh, so they can give more drawings, we can get more comments, that's my thought. So, what we go through is there's these five questions here, A, B, C, D, and E.
Okay.
So these are things that we're supposed to consider, and ultimately, we're supposed to consider, um, the benefit to you and how it's going to impact the community, neighbors, and so on. Um, so these are the five things, you don't necessarily have to completely comply with all five, but, um, for example, um, complying with neighborhood character is something we think about, so, um, whether or not there's another way you can accomplish what you need, that's another thing. So in general, we're here to provide some relief, but we can't hand these out like candy, so if you have a reasonable way to get things done without and still comply with code, you know, we encourage you to do that, but then again, we also realize that to get the objectives that people come in with, that may not be possible. So, again, tho- those are the things we're supposed to consider, so you can read that here, this is actually a draft one we had for this, I can just give you a copy of this, I mean, it's just fill in the blank, but it's the same, it's the same thing, yeah. So we're going to go through and we're going to discuss that, so when you come in again, um, and we've heard about the, um, lot coverage, um, in particular, I personally would like, I mean, we have not seen a request for a larger building, if you have opinions on, if you know of other people that have done something similar, or you can think of some other examples in the village, um, for something that's somewhat a common scenario, we, we definitely consider that, like you said, lot coverage, people commonly, that's an issue. If you have ideas for other people that have outbuildings, whatever they may be, that aren't a garage.
Okay.
Um, I'd be curious about that, and if you have any comments on how you think it fits in with community character and so on, I'd be very much like to hear from you about that.
So, like, just kind of like snoop around, or like, now it's me?
I didn't say anything, don't say walking through anyone's backyards, but if you look on Google Maps or something, or something like that.
Okay.
Or are you going anywhere to do that?
So, that's, might bring up a good question, in my case, right on my lot, where I have the screen and porch connected to a detached garage.
Yes.
Is that considered an accessory building?
Well, that would be a garage.
That is a.
It's just considered part of the garage.
It's just part of the garage.
Yeah.
Okay, but you mean, you're talking about a part of the walkway?
It's a screen, I have a screened in porch.
But it's actually built to your house.
No, it's actually to the exterior garage.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Well, we've had garages come in with, uh, what, I mean, there's been carriage houses that we've done, so they've had a garage with a whole addition and wing and other stuff added on to them, so we've approved large garages before.
But it's all considered a garage.
Now, keep, I'm just throwing this out there, keep in mind, we just only have a one-car garage too, I don't think that's come up in conversation, so.
So, so I'm just bringing this up, because this is, I don't know, we're going to have to discuss what we want to do with these accessory buildings.
Yeah, no, that's, I just wanted you to know what we were working.
Criteria between the town and the village when it comes to sheds?
Oh, there, we have, we have separate code, different code.
Yeah.
And then like, because where her mother lives on Sunset, her house is in the town, but her backyard's in the village.
Yeah.
And literally.
And we showed you.
Is her neighbor's.
Is a neighbor's shed, so that's.
Mom, this is like, this is like exactly what, what probably would be, kind of, it looks like if I, I haven't gone over to measure their shed yet. My guess is it's twelve by twenty, based on the size of my mom's shed, and just eyeing it from, from the property line.
Yeah, yeah, okay, anyway, I'm throwing this out there, because the other thing we're supposed to do is approve the minimum variance necessary to, um, let you accomplish your, your thing you want to do. So that doesn't mean we need to swish over six inches on that shed, but, um, you know, if it's fairly large, if it's completely larger, you know.
What if we also, like, let's just say, like, if we lessened, like, some of the concrete or whatever, would, that would help too, right, if we?
Well, that would be for impervious surface.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, so I'm kind of separating the issue of your shed from the impervious surface.
Okay.
Because shed is something.
So the shed is not considered impervious surface?
It's all impervious surface, gravel's impervious.
It is, but there's a separate, there, there's, there's going to be a variance for the, the, the coverage, but then there may also be a separate variance for the shed, so, yeah.
For the size of the shed.
The size, yeah.
Okay.
So I'm assuming you may need to come in with that, that's the one, that's the thing that really seems different about this application versus the other ones we've seen, because we've seen a lot of lot coverage ones, and.
Got it.
And we understand that, so we're, we're asking you questions, how is this?
So you kind of want me to snoop around and see what I can see as far as shed size is?
You, you can search on the village website and past PCBA meetings and just, and see addresses maybe, and what, what is been approved, yeah.
If, if you, um, if you, any commentary as to why, you know, uh, we have to consider why it complies with, um, um, community character? Now, one of the reasons why I'm bringing this up is, um, we've approved a lot of lot coverage ones, but there was one that, I'm thinking of Maple Street, that came up
The corner.
A, a few years ago, where they applied to do an addition, it was, you know, it wasn't a shed, and, um, they had a lot coverage variance and a big addition to their house, and it turned out what they were doing was building a structure that was about fifty percent larger than any other house on the street. So, what that came up with was the size of that started coming up, and people started, and ultimately, the architectural board, um, said, no, that's, that's just too big, it's out of character with community character. So I'm bringing it up at one, a time where it didn't happen, I'm not saying which way we're going to go about this, we're going to have to discuss it, I don't, I don't know where this is going to go. But just think about that, is, you know, think about how it fits in with community character, and I'd be curious to hear whatever you have to say, if you know of other people with, um, non-garage structures, whether it be an old barn or whatever, if you know of anybody, I'm curious about that.
Okay.
None, okay.
Right. That, that's my thinking, so.
I'm going to have to do a lot of walking around.
Oh, Google Maps is your favorite.
What size is this? What do you have back there?
No, if, you're, you're wondering is, well, if you see something on a map, how, how do you know how big it is? Talk to Steve, he can tell you.
Oh, oh, so I'll find it, then I talk to Steve, you have to be a detective, do you?
Well, if you want, we can give you a website, you can figure it out yourself, there's, uh, Monroe County has a GIS website.
Okay.
And it has maps that show property boundaries, and you can measure anything in there.
Okay.
So if you want to measure the distance from your neighbor's, um, garage to the light pole on the street.
Okay.
You know, you can figure that out, or if you want to figure out the distance from the pole on the street to your shed location, you can figure that out, but Steve could hopefully be, show you how to use that possibly, if that helps you. So, I look at that from time to time, I don't know if everyone here is familiar with that, but.
So, we'll, we'll do our due diligence, and, um, and then what do we, where do we go from here?
Well, updated plans.
Updated plans.
Steve needs to review them and see if you need additional variances, I think that's the big one, you know, it's next.
Okay.
Okay.
And, um, then the other thing is, uh, I'm encouraging you to work out your utilities and stuff with contractors to make sure it's practical to build it, because again, we don't want to give you.
We were hoping to have an.
Relief for something that.
Came here, but that's.
That can't be built, it didn't happen.
That's all right.
You know, it's like, you want to persist, but you don't want to piss off.
Right.
Yeah.
You want, you know?
Yeah, this is all, oh, yeah, it'll cost you fifteen percent more.
No, it's, it's a face and pub, I had to give, you know, the, I'm a parent and wanted my, all my stuff updated for my sprinkler systems and everything like that, and I couldn't get anybody to do anything. Email after email, phone call, phone call, and I finally said to Baggins, said, they're going to close me down if you don't do this stuff for me, and they finally did, and I was just like.
Oh, man.
But not really in a timely manner, so.
Two and a half, three months. And they're like, we really want this done by the end of the year, I'm like, I'm trying.
When we just got it done.
Colonial fire, and, uh, and, you know, this action security, and they won't come in and do the work.
Oh, man.
Crazy. You know, so, but.
Getting contractors is, like, those, yeah, lots of fun.
I know.
Yeah, well, good luck with it.
Yeah, Steve too.
Um, okay, so what I'm going to suggest we do is we keep the public hearing open, so when, updated plans, they'll be on the website, um, hopefully we should have them, what, about a week before the next meeting?
Um, we want to keep to the deadline if they need additional variances, it would have been, we needed them now. Well, we wanna keep to the deadline if they need additional variances, it would have been, we needed them now. So for the March 6th meeting?
Well, I think if we amend, we'll have to talk about it, I don't know if our attorney knows. If we amend their application to apply for additional variances, would that count as a new application and a new application deadline? Or do we?
I don't know.
That might be, maybe that's just something we'll need to follow up on.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to just.
Have to, but I think at least we can continue the discussion at the next regular meeting. So that'll be in a month.
March 6.
And you'll, that should, March 6.
Hopefully, that should give us enough time for it.
To, you know, yeah.
Hopefully, we'll come up with our, you know, I's dotted and our T's crossed.
Yeah.
And we'll see if that kicks in other application deadlines or not, we'll leave that to Steve to sort out. So I'll make a motion to keep the public hearing for this open and continue discussion at our next regular meeting on March 6th at 6:30 P.M.
I'll second.
Who was that?
Jeri.
Member Wokes?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Lova?
Aye.
Chair Reesstra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you for presenting something.
Thanks for the question.
You sound very enthusiastic about your project, that's great to hear.
Yeah, it's fun, yeah, lots of fun, we're hoping to have lots of fun with them.
For lots of years.
They're active little boys, so, yeah.
Okay.
How old are they?
I see them out there sometimes mowing the lawn and stuff like that, so.
They're rocking all the time.
Keeping us young, that's for sure.
How old are your boys?
They're eight and a half.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, mine are, mine are 13 and 11, so.
Okay, you're familiar, yeah.
I'm not very.
Oh, my God, love it.
13, 11, you're getting right into it now.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of fighting yet?
Yeah.
Like, you're like, yeah. It's been going a lot harder than I have really gotten, too much time.
They're, they're good, they're, they fight, but they get along also.
I have two brothers, so I know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, me too.
Do you really? You have a twin?
No, not twins, so, no, no, I have, there are four brothers, we didn't have any sisters.
Oh, my gosh.
She had a brother, that's it, so she doesn't really know.
And he's one of nine.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh, wow.
Well, actually, 11, technically, but.
Who's counting?
Who's counting?
Alright, excellent, well, nice to meet everybody.
Yeah, thanks, everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll see you in a month, and we'll.
We'll see you in a month, we'll have everything.
Catch you what we can when we have it, okay?
Yeah, and by the way, if you have a digital drawing of that, our architect or whenever, please send that in, because that looks much higher quality than the stuff we received.
Okay.
So they can print it to a PDF or whatever it is, and then, you know, get that to Steve when it's over.
And in the meantime, you guys have.
What ours look like.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was me, I'm sure.
And if you guys have other questions in the meantime, don't hesitate to talk to Steve, and I'm sure he can guide you.
Perfect.
So we can be off set for next time.
Awesome, thanks for your time.
Alright, good luck, thanks.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Quick question for you guys, in terms of maybe some of the code stuff, if you know. There's two for rent signs that sit down on South Avenue. On the left, you should be headed from here towards Littleton Fields. The last five or six houses on the left. They look like they've become quite permanent in there. They're, they're two properties apart, they've been in there for six months.
They're the rental properties, right?
They're for sale, aren't they?
It does, the sign does not say for sale.
Just for rent.
It almost doesn't say.
I thought the river's selling, I saw it on Zillow this.
Yeah, it says.
Oh, okay.
Honey Ford Real Estate. The phone number, Maribel Honey Ford, licensed real estate broker, Spanish Realtor, family owns and operates. It doesn't say it's for sale, for rent, for nothing.
Okay, I'd advise you just talking to the building inspector if you're concerned about it. He does enforcement, we don't do enforcement. So we can't hand out violation notices or knock on the door and say, get rid of that, we can't, we don't do that.
Yeah.
But the building inspector does.
The guy to talk to.
So Steve is.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have minutes.
Yeah.
One edit already made is, member Hoffman has missing from every motion.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I didn't vote.
There's a lot of load out there.
Right, yeah.
I gotta find it, these are very simple minutes. There's the resolution that was adopted, I believe that was for the meeting I did not attend, and you haven't, I believe I voted to abstain. I believe, Dave, you voted to abstain as well?
That's right.
So that is the first motion under Resolution 2023, verse 12. So yes, you gotta correct in the second motion there, I believe, other than missing out on Katie.
I feel okay if you just included these at the next meeting, because it seems like this is just a lot of edits that I'd rather you see a different copy at the next meeting, is that okay?
Well, so, I don't have strong feelings either way. I don't have strong feelings either way either, other than, you know, we update the votes, but. If you wanna do, if you wanna just say what would changes then, or if you wanna type up the revisions that we approve later, I don't care too much either way.
Yes, because I don't know where some of the errors are behind looking at them again, so I'll have them ready at the next meeting.
Okay. Okay. So I've heard of a couple updates on some things going on. If anyone else wants to throw out anything, I heard a little bit about some things the trustees are working on. First of all, there is some code for short-term rentals with Airbnb. My understanding is they're expecting a report in the near future from a committee that was looking into the issue. So that's gonna be coming up, and then they may, we may wanna weigh in on that, or they may forward it to us, or we may have to review that. I don't know where that's gonna go, but that's coming up. I understand the trustees are deep in their budget season right now.
Oh, yeah.
And I haven't appeared at a trustee meeting in quite a while, I don't know if anyone else has any comments on anything they've observed.
No.
Please join.
Please join with some of the. What is the average length of a meeting these days?
Uh, four hours.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Did you say four?
Yeah, you don't have to be there the whole time, we're just encouraged residents, you know.
Okay. And I think there are some other matters which we'd probably best discuss with our attorney and conference. You, I understand you're prepared to go over a few things with us, so there. Correct.